Happy New Year. I'm gonna call the first meeting of the year for the Northborough School Committee for Wednesday, January 2nd, 2019 to order. Our first item on the agenda this evening is action on the open meeting minutes of December 5th, 2018.
Madam Chair President, I move that we accept the Northborough School Committee open meeting minutes as presented from Wednesday, December the 5th, 2018.
All those in favor? Oppose? Attain? Passes? The next, we've no new business at this time and no old business at this time. So the next thing on the agenda is the superintendent's report to the committee on the FY19 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report.
That came up quick.
Did I get through fast?
No time to ease into that one. Thank you. Some good news, continuation from our conversations, I think it started in September regarding the mold mitigation, prior to the financial trend monitoring presentation presented by John Cader, Town Administrator, on December 13th, which many of our committee members attended. There was a meeting with appropriations, at which time they reviewed the letter that's in your packet dated December 12th submitted by me in summary of the events surrounding the requirement to mitigate mold at Proctor and in two classrooms at Malickon. And on the reverse side, you will see what was the request to transfer from the reserve fund, $175,000, into our appropriated budget so that we could expend and pay for the Service Master Elite mitigation process, as well as the testing through hub testing. And so there was a presentation to them. After some great conversation, the appropriation committee unanimously voted to transfer the funds. And so in our operational expenditure report this month, you will note that there is a variance, because if you add up the amount of funds, you'll notice that $175,000 didn't actually cover the total cost of the expenditures. With Service Master Elite invoicing us at $196,821.34. And hub testing, again noted on my communication to them, $20,700, there was a shortfall. That money is absorbed at this point in time in the operational budget. And I am pleased that John Cader moved this forward and that the appropriations committee recognized what an extraordinary event this was. And so the expenditure report, for the first time in some time, notes that we do have a variance in the building maintenance, or the maintenance of building account in this budget of $42,061. It's so noted because it was a significant increase over the $3,000 amount as a balance in last month's expenditure report. And as we voted, I think four years or three years ago now, we would so know any significant variances on the front cover. If you do turn to, I do want to note how that was captured in this report. And building maintenance is located on page 11. So just in case this is out and about and warrants an explanation, because our budget is an appropriated budget and it's voted at town meeting, the appropriations committee can transfer money into that. That comes under their purview and it is their authority to do so. So halfway through the page, you'll notice that there's an adjustment to the building maintenance proctor line item. And that's how we capture in that transfer of funds. We then expended the amounts of money that are supported in the letter to the appropriation committee, all but $8,000 of the costs in this line item. And then under the Malickon line item, building maintenance, you'll see some money expended as well for the small portion of the hub testing that was related to Malickon School. We wanted to make sure that we adequately reflected the expenditures related to the mitigation process in both of those two lines. And so we did expend some of the funds as well in the Malickon line item. We reviewed all this with town accountant Jason Little to make sure that the transaction was as it should be. And that's why it was not included in your report. I think I noted that in the communication to you all. Today, we were able to finalize it when everyone was back from the holiday season. And this budget expenditure report does reflect the accurate balance for this year. I did have a conversation with the principals prior to this meeting. We get our first meeting of the 2019 year. And the budget is at this point for expenditures that are required. So it isn't frozen, but it's lukewarm at this point, I would say. So we're keeping a watchful eye over this. We do have a couple special ed potential district tuitions that might be coming our way. So we want to be very watchful over our position at this point. We also are well encumbered in the budget. You'll note in this month's, being forward, thinking about the end of the year and wanting to make sure that we do not have somewhat of a scramble to offset any shortfalls in our revolving account, in the kindergarten and cafeteria account. We have gone ahead and encumbered. And again, you can note that on the cafeteria, which is on page nine, let's see, let's hope it's in here. Yep. Page nine. You'll note that in the cafeteria line item, which is in the middle of the page, so as to be mindful of any expenditures that come our way as we close out the year, even though it's January, we're looking at that already. We've encumbered $40,000 of this operational budget to offset what we believe will be closer to $40,000 to $50,000 deficit, based on our revenues right now and our expenses. We also, and I mentioned this when we were talking about the kindergarten transition plan, recognizing that the revenue for this year are less than we would have expected because a number of families had tuition waivers this year. There was a significant increase in the tuition waivers. We've encumbered some funds as well to offset any shortfalls in the kindergarten account as well. We wanted to make sure that those were well represented in this budget, so as we move closer to the end of the year, we have an accurate balance for expending the remaining balance. So right now, that $300,000 on the bottom line already takes into consideration that we will have to offset in the operational budget, shortfalls in those two areas. So being very proactive with our budgeting practices. And obviously, we hope that's not the case. And if it isn't, then we'll have an opportunity to prepay some special ed expenditures by law. But at this point, that's where we are.
So the cafeteria line item. So is that different than typically? Because I mean, I know we've signed lots of things for cafeterias. So how come it's like 0-0-0-0 and then it goes to the $40,000?
Generally speaking, cafeteria is never budgeted as part of a budget process in building our budget. Because our cafeterias are self-sustaining. But we do recognize that in the past years, we've had to offset deficits in that account, in the revolving account. And those offsets come from funds in our operational budget. So the only place we have to go to the bank, basically, to pay the debt, is in the operational budget. So in years past, we've not encumbered that soon enough, so that in the year closed out, we were looking to circuit breaker to offset special ed, which then freed up money in the operational budget to cover our cafeteria and kindergarten. This year, given that it's January and we're looking forward, we know that there's going to be a shortfall. So expending this appropriation, this budget, already taking into account revenues that are going to be needed to offset deficits that we know are going to happen, allows us to be proactive with our spending and also recognizing that there's only so much money to meet, to offset these expenses.
Would it make sense in future budgets to have it in earlier or no, just because it's not?
We do not support, and this is gonna sound crazy, it's gonna sound like it's a contradiction and it somewhat is, but it's the reality. We do not make a practice or have a practice of supporting cafeteria operations through the operational budget. We haven't for years. It is a self-sustaining operation. And the reality is, in a perfect year, we would never have to go to the operational budget to offset deficits. That is also true with kindergarten. So we have kindergarten funded through two sources. One, some of the money is carried or represented in teaching salary line item. And so that's the amount of money that we discussed when we were talking about the transitional plan. And then the balance of the cost for kindergarten is offset with revolving accounts. Some years, because everyone pays the full tuition, we have the right number of students, we don't need to go to the operational budget to offset those shortfalls. This year, we know that we're only going to take in so much revenue because we know that the number of people who requested a waiver is actually creating a revenue shortfall in kindergarten account. We can't raise kindergarten. We're trying to go in the opposite direction, right? So we have to find those funds. So doing this allows us to have a real sense of what we have left to expend in the fiscal year.
I want to say it's really smart, I think, to encumber it this early to catch it. I really do appreciate that. That is in there that helps us with the bottom line and looking forward. So I really think that's excellent, that we encumber it.
I mean, we can't avoid the issue and that is, we would have a shortfall in these two accounts. For something that could not necessarily be prevented, right?
Just a quick question about the molds, now that that's all, pretty much.
I was trying to come up with a humorous pun, but I can't. It's too early after vacation.
Surely, there were some discussions about why it happens, preventing it in the future, either through the class factors internally with the staff. Can we get an update on?
Sure.
Just that little piece?
So, that's a great question. In fact, we are in the process of creating a fairly well-vetted plan about what to do if and when mold happens, right? The interesting part about that question is, after much testing and many reports presented to us, or the summary report by the testing organization, even with the best plan in place, the summer events could have still happened and probably would have because of the extraordinary circumstances that created the mold situation. However, it doesn't mean that we can't improve our practice. So hub testing has presented us with some recommendations. In addition to that, the material that was distributed during our forum, our open forum, where we invited in the community, Kelly, I think you were present at that, to listen to why it happened, has a lot of positive actions. And so we're in the process of putting an action plan together with the three facilities coordinators, so that our practices through the districts are the same. Things like using a device, which is sort of like a, it's a very inexpensive mold testing device, which isn't foolproof, but again, it could be something that we put in place that we don't have now. It's easily purchased at a hardware store, we have several different samples of it. And so they're suggesting that that might be something that we would be alerted to, maybe sooner than later. Things like, you know, forming a partnership with the teachers and having the rooms lightened a little bit by more things removed from the rooms at the start of the summer and through the summer. Leaving cabinet doors open to let a better airflow happen, making sure that the timing of the work that's done in our buildings is out of sync, if you will, with the hot temperatures that we experience in the summer, to the extent predicted. And then doing more sort of observational walkthroughs in around the school campuses. So once that final draft is put together, we will definitely bring it before school committee. I will say that I was encouraged by one of our members of the appropriations committee, particularly Tony Petit, who's an extraordinary, I think biologist, engineer, all of that. And a lot of these questions were asked of us when we presented to the appropriations committee, obviously. And it's on everyone's mind. And Tony spoke up, Mr. Petit spoke up, and basically reiterated the, look, mold happens, you know, and this is really what happened, that to some extent could not have been remediated or mitigated, I guess, before and after the fact. So we're looking at our practice and we will present that to you.
You need to have a vote to approve it, Kelly?
A vote to approve?
Oh, a motion?
Yes, yes. I'd like to make a motion to vote to approve until audited the FY19 Monthly General Fund Expenditure Report as of December 31st, 2018.
Second motion? As we just discussed, all those in favor? Great. Does it have one more comment?
I just have one more comment. I'd like to thank the superintendent's office, along with John Cader and the appropriations committee, for the cooperation that has been ongoing for so many several years. But to understand, to take money from out of the reserve fund for this is very helpful. So I'd like to thank also the town boards who are involved into this, to thank them for this emergency situation.
Thank you. Moving on, we have enrollments.
Enrollments are in your packet. We are going to continue to monitor these pretty much on a daily basis as we move closer to the presentation of the recommended budget in February. As we know, enrollments play a big part of our staffing models, which definitely impacts our requested budget. So at this point, we seem to be within our class size ranges, not only this year, but also for our projections for next year. Kindergarten registration starts next week. And there's a feeling that there are a lot of students moving in. We just had a conversation about the number of calls that have been received, so that might be an impact. So another reason to hold for the presentation in February, because we do have January 15th required notification by staff if they're planning to have any type of change of employment, whether they retire or take a leave. And then we'll have some stronger kindergarten numbers as well.
And the next thing is?
Budget calendar in the packet. We've added the financial monitoring presentation and also I do anticipate having a subcommittee meeting before the final presentation of the budget in February. It was great to have all five school committee members at the last budget subcommittee meeting. I think it was a really in-depth conversation about the budget process, so looking forward to that. Budget goals are reflected in the preliminary budget and distribution only this evening. Capital improvement plan, no changes since the presentation last month. It was approved on November 5th. And conversations continue through Mr. Cader's office about the security upgrades. And again, there has been no change in that conversation at this point. We're moving forward with that. And the preliminary budget was distributed last month. We had a fairly weekly presentation and it's in your packet again, just for review. Again, anticipating that we will vote in February on the recommended budget.
Other discussion on the preliminary budget from last month? Alright. And then policy development and our distribution. We have a first reading of policy C140, telephone toll calls. Was there any discussion or questions surrounding that first reading and do you want to, Lauren?
So I was wondering, does it have to be changed the title of the policy? I feel like toll calls sounds a little bit outdated. It seems to encompass a little bit more now.
You're saying just because it's basically telephone procedures, you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, it still talks about, you know, placing collect calls, long distance and toll calls, but also just talks about phones in general for personal business. So I didn't know if we wanted to generalize the title at all, or if that is a practice you have done in the past.
I would think the toll for the, I mean, it just means calls that are related to expense mostly. I assume that's the main concern of this policy is the expenses surrounding?
Telephone usage and toll call, something like that, you're saying?
It's not necessarily usage of the phone, it's just any expenses related to such.
Was there a particular context for this revision?
I think there's no usage either for anything. I think it was just the annual?
Just general, okay. Nothing in particular.
No.
It's very logical. I see Kelly's, I'm sorry, Lauren's point about the title could go either way. I mean, ultimately, the policy still has been expanded, but maybe we have to change other, I don't know what else that impacts when you change the title, all the other documents.
Is this one across all?
So this was revised in Southborough last year. And we had, Southborough School Committee had a very similar conversation around, do we even need such a policy? Is the name even appropriate? And they came to the consensus that this is probably a policy that is going to be aged out very shortly. And that with some minor modifications, it still fits the time. But in the future, we probably don't even need such a policy because of cell phones and access to.
Yeah, when I was, when you sent the materials over our email, and I saw telephone toll calls, I just said, oh, that's gonna be elimination of a, because that's, I mean, that's like one of those words from the 50s or 60s, right? And I thought we were just gonna eliminate the policy. But I agree, toll calls, I don't think we even use that term. But if we have to keep the toll calls in, it's like the usage of the school telephones is what this really seems to be going more on.
Personal use, yeah.
Personal use of.
Right. So maybe we can bring it back to subcommittee and maybe we'll get a little bit more maybe and then bring it back for a second read? Or would it be another first read if it's completely revised again?
It'd be a second read.
It would still be a second read. Alright.
I don't think it's doing any harm.
Right.
Sure. Sounds good.
And we're not regulated by any state statutes or laws that we have to call it that.
Correct. Okay.
Just past.
Practice.
vernacular.
Yeah. Practice. Full cost. Moving on, the next item on the agenda is audience sharing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to share anything with the committee? Everybody looks at last minute. Hi, I'm here. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. I don't think I've ever been on a meeting that you have audience sharing at before 7:30.
Do you have any principal audience sharing or just coming back?
Do you have anything to report from today? We're very happy to be back. It's a great day.
I'll just do a quick master plan steering committee for the town. Was going to be on January 3rd, but it's been rescheduled to January 10th. This is just a steering committee meeting, just a little update, people to come and listen and know what's going on with the master plan. Anybody else have any?
On behalf of the NS staff, they have an event on January 9th. It's at the Northborough Library. Its author, Michael Bellman, is speaking about executive function skills for kids. So it sounds like a really interesting talk and stuff.
Is there a time for that?
Yep. It's 6:30 to 8:30. And I'll forward you the flyer, Joan, if you'd like.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just went to a professional development on executive functioning and learned a lot, so probably go to that. I feel like every person on earth needs to know more about executive functioning. I feel like it will help us all, so I'm definitely interested in attending.
His book is called, Your Kid's Gonna Be Okay, A Guide to Raising Competent and Confident Kids.
Thank you. That will routinely go out with the principal backpacks, but it's also going out as a separate send to support back from the district as the district doing. Yeah, it looks great. Unfortunately, it's on a Wednesday.
What月份?
I think it's, yeah, it's Wednesday, yeah. Oh, yeah.
But I think it might be taped, so.
Yeah.
Should be great. Sounds good. Any other sharing? Alright. So we're gonna move on to personnel items. We have distribution of the personnel report in your packets. And then finally, we have communications. Am I gonna go over this? Yes. So the personnel report is in your packet. Jen, Jill noted that we have a transfer on a person who's already in Peaslee, but she's transferring with her in Peaslee to a different position. So that's why that's noted in. Michelle Brent, a legend in the music, Music Man, is retiring. I'm not sure if you wanna share any thoughts or wait until the end of the school year?
I'll wait until the end of the school year.
Okay. And then there'll be lots to share.
There will.
Communications, thank you Sue. Very exciting in the month of December. We took a slight hiatus with the awarding of the Anna Seaver Awards last year and really put a more, while still being a district recognition in honor of Anna Seaver, long ago, but longtime teacher in the district. In her honor, we wanted to take an opportunity to sort of review the practice of the awarding this. We have so many outstanding educators in our community, that we did so last year and really refocused the awarding of this as a building level initiative, with the principals more engaged, I think, in the process and in the discussion of the selection. So this year, we recognized three educators as the Anna Seaver Award recipients. And this is actually how they receive it. It's very festive, it's a festive day. And the honor was shared. The district arrived with the bag and the plaque in tow, which as soon as we walked through the door, no matter how much we try to disguise it, everyone says, oh, we think that's the Anna Seaver Award. And this year, we recognized three outstanding staff members. Lori A. Miller from the Proctor School, Kathy Pea from Malickon Middle, and Jennifer Shields from Peaslee. So it was a grand event and I'm not sure if the principals wanted to add in more. It was a great round of applause and lots of celebration at each event. You all want to, but you're the first one to say it, I know.
It was really nice. We had to be very surprised to make a speak for Lori and, you know, just her dedication passion to Proctor and she was just, Greg and Christine were there and just, you know, over the moon. Staff were just, you know, so pleased that she was awarded that and so supportive of her. So it was just really nice to be able to share that with her. We're very proud of our teachers. It was a good day.
Yeah, it was great. Kathy Pea was not expecting it and, you know, later she told me how embarrassed she was, but she, and I think because we took a year off, people really weren't expecting it. And we changed ours from breakfast to lunch, so they really weren't expecting it. So it was really nice.
And it's always nice, too, to just see the appreciation from the peers, you know, the round of applause and just the, you know, the joy for the recipients is special. And also, is it?
Yeah, I think we were wondering, is it principal nominated? It is? That's great. Those are questioning?
And that was a little bit more of a shift. I think it was more of a district principal kind of sharing of nominees and given that the principals know their staff the best, and it is really a and it is really a school-to-school kind of recognition opportunity, we wanted to expand it and to make sure that all of the schools had an opportunity to recognize within their own school. So it was a great, I think, shift. And ordinarily, the superintendent reads the write-up, but the principals wrote it. So that was passed to the principals, which I think was nice. It was a nice shift, so. It was a good break to review our practice. Also, in your packet is an announcement from the school committees of Greg Martinow's appointment to superintendent as of July 1st. This was shared.
We're very happy about that. And we congratulate you and look forward to the school year.
And also, a wonderful presentation, as always, by our town administrator, John Daire. The annual presentation of the state of Northborough, I guess, the state of our district. And his financial trend monitoring report, always full of great information. It really does provide some foundation for the work that we do as we build our school budget for the next year. And Kelly and Lauren were both in attendance. It was your first one?
It was great. I think that John did a fabulous job. He makes hard financial data easy to understand. And I think it was, as newbie, as a newbie, it was really, I think, important to go and really to understand how the town works and how the school committee works with the town.
Great, all right. So lastly, future agenda items. We will probably have some more school plans coming down the page.
And the recommended FY19 budget. And usually, if the warrant articles are ready and known in February, we do.
Are we doing the warrant article with the thing? Or who would, because is it? Is it K-8? Or is the high school involved too? No, it's just K-8, okay.
So the K-8 budget is presented and voted? And then, the high school budget is a separate presentation and vote. So the warrant article would be read by, if there is a warrant article moving forward, it's read by a K-8 school committee member because it would just be a warrant article for the Northborough Public Schools. And I think we do not have a school improvement plan for February, right, Jill? I think you're next.
No, she did. I guess it was memorable.
No, it was actually so good, I would like to see it again. So we want, we want to. And I think we took February maybe off because we knew we were going to have some budget conversations. So we'll have one in April and May.
Will the policy subcommittee be meeting before the next one? So we may get that telephone?
If there's a wish to feedback on our operational meeting, we could have a back-to-back. One night out?
Sounds good. So, corporate business, and other business, which may lead to recommitment of the committee? I think we might have set a record. This is for time of getting through the agenda. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn unless there's anything else that anybody's got?
At least an hour, come on, Kelly, come on.
We can sit here.
Are you moving?
You can move.
Let's write this one down.
All of those in favor?
We can't vote, but we're going to.